Welcome everyone to the regular Aspen City Council meeting. It is December 2nd at 5:00 PM and I will call the meeting to order. And Nicole, ask you to call the roll, please.
Councillor Benedetti.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
Councillor Guth.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Richards.
Here. We have no scheduled public appearances today, so we will go right to citizen comment and petitions. Time for citizen to address council on issues not scheduled for a public hearing. Please limit your comments to about three minutes. So is anyone here for public comment tonight? Francis, come on up and give us an update.
I'm working on it. I'm Francis Stuckins. Thanks for addressing the curse of the Utes, which is the interest to Aspen. There's so much going on. I read the article in the Daily today. Thanks for doing what you're doing. There's really no easy solution for the whole thing. I like the idea of trying to get the single occupancy vehicles down to this carpooling, some kind of incentive for carpooling, which would be great. Because I stand there at the Aspen Country Inn and I see, as I take the bus, and see just, almost every car has just one driver in it. And they're big now. The trucks are giant. So, yeah, that's my comment on that. Speaking of Aspen Country Inn, when I see all the cars going by, I'm thinking we have several units open, more than just the two that I knew about. And I went to the office and said, what are we going to do about that? It would be great if all our tax incentive for the schools brought teachers to be able to be in that housing. Because they're nice apartments and it's a nice quiet place, too. It's not just an old folks' home anymore. Yeah, and, you know, any other solution would be like, you know, a train or some kind of redacted suspension bridge. I don't know. I'm not an engineer. But I definitely see potential in what we can do here. And the bus program is outstanding. Work in town, live in town. I don't know if there could ever be another building moratorium like we had about, you know, back in the 90s, but that would definitely put it down in the traffic. Yeah. Thanks to the Aspen Daily for doing what they're doing. We have some great commentary going on. And young journalists like Austin Corona is back. He's staying in town for a while. Wrote some articles. Annalise Gruder, great commentary, along with everyone else who lives here. The Carls Wine Cellar, thank you. The wine sale was a huge success and it's a community event. We did great. It's a record breaker, number 59. So thank you. Thanks, Aspen. Thanks, everyone who stopped in. I'm still worried about the single-use cups at the gas station. You can't recycle them. You can't throw, you know, all you can do is throw them away. I'm using them to throw sand on the sidewalk right now.
That's pretty much your three minutes, Francis.
Okay, that's it. That's all I had to say. So thanks again, members of city council. Mayor Richards, hang in there. And all this snow is some great carbon drawdown.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. I just want to briefly say that the Little Nell lift issue is not on consent calendar. I mistakenly told someone that earlier. It will be one of our public hearings after the rest of our regular items. So just mentioning that. Anyone else for public comment? Tony?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Toni Kronberg. And I just came down Main Street. I was just at the airport. They had the airport modernization meetings. The traffic is only 5:03 right now. It has backed up double all the way to the courthouse. And I think that it might be time to work with Mike Buglioni. I know he's been trying to work on it about getting the two lanes opened up out of the roundabout. With cars not being able to go through the West End now and just everything is just, this is a classic example of what would happen if we had a wildfire and people could not get out of town. Then I also wanted to, I feel like following in Patrick's footsteps, but on this coming Thursday, at the fire station, there, the airport modernization is taking public comment on the terminal design and the multimodal connectivity section of it. And Session 1 is from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. And Session 2 is from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. And they're really counting on a lot of community members turning out to give their input on it. And then, I have, what, 30 seconds left, Mayor Richards?
No, you have almost two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. So this is a true story, a real-life story. A friend of mine had to go down to Denver for eye surgery. He's blind in one eye. He had to go down and get those needles that got stuck in his eye. He lives at Truscott. The local, and because of his eyes, he can't drive, so he takes the bus. So he goes out to Truscott. The local bus does not show up. This is like 7:15 in the morning. He's got to be in Denver, what, 2:30? So he hops on the Burlingame bus, takes that to Buttermilk, gets on the local to go down to Glenwood to get to the bus tang. And of course, he missed the bus tang, so it pushed everything back. He missed his appointment. They got him in, but he had to stay over last night and come back today. And why I'm bringing that particular story up is because while we love the buses, they're not always dependable. And that this was someone who really relied on the bus to at least get him out of town. So of course, I'm going to make a plug for the gondola. So if there was a gondola in town, he could have just gotten on it, just didn't have to wait for it. Would take him right to Brush Creek, and then he could get the BRT down to Glenwood. But thank you so much. That's it for now.
Thank you.
And I hope everyone can attend on Thursday.
Thank you so much, Tony. Is there anyone else in the audience for public comment? I'm not seeing anyone, and I'm not seeing anyone online, so I will close the public comment section of our meeting. We will move on to special orders of the day, council members, and mayor's comments. Bill, do you have anything today?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was just for me to read, like, to myself.
No, it was your announcement tonight.
Well, communication council briefing tonight of what a crash alert means. To keep roads safe and traffic moving during snowstorms, the Aspen Police Department may activate what is called a crash alert. And here's what that means. Police will only respond to crashes involving injuries, disabled vehicles blocking traffic, alcohol or drug involvement, hit-and-run incidents, government vehicles. If you're involved in a minor fender bender during a crash alert, exchange information such as name, phone, registration, insurance with the other driver. Move along safely. Don't stay exposed on icy roads. File your crash report online on Colorado State Patrol's website as soon as possible. And this approach is the safest choice for everyone on the road. It reduces crash risks and clears roads faster.
There you go.
DSA.
There you go. Comments? John, you want to start?
Yeah, I guess I'll start with this announcement for the Red Brick. Join us in celebrating the winter season and the unveiling of new artworks by our resident artists at the Red Brick Center for the Arts. This all-ages event features festive fare, community mingling, and a hands-on art-making activity. Join us Thursday, December 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Free admission. I'd also like to comment on the loss of several local community members recently that I knew personally that had, all three lived here a long time. One's Dick Jackson. He founded Aspen Expeditions, local fixture here for years, passed away at home last week. Another is John Miller. He was the CEO of Castle Creek Investors. That's the gentleman who my wife and I bought our property from on the backside. And he also lived here for a good 35 years and was just a very generous man. And lastly, Jeff Isaacson, who I worked with up at the Pine Creek Cook House back in the early 90s, and he continued to work there every winter until this fall, when he passed away on vacation in Thailand. But these were all three very long-term local fixtures of our community that we've lost in a short period of time.
Thanks, John. They'll be missed. Christine?
I have a council update. It's, it could be a board update as well, but there was an article today about the Transportation Coalition. And I think, I don't think council will be coming to you next month with any sort of recommendations out of that, regardless of what the article said today. A lot of important work has been shared there and a lot of information has been learned, but it's very much a work in progress. And I think the next step is definitively community engagement. So I just wanted to give you an update and kind of background on what was reported today.
Thank you for that, Christine. Let's see, as you can tell, I'm starting to spread around the comms announcements, so I'm not reading six in a row. But with winter being here, we would like to remind our residents and businesses of some of the protocols that are in place during the winter. Now that we finally have snow, we'd like to remind residents of a few rules about snow removal and public safety response during snowfalls. Sidewalk safety is a community responsibility. Property owners or tenants must ensure that sidewalks, driveways, and mailboxes are accessible. The city does not provide snow removal services in these areas. Property owners are required to shovel all snow within three hours of snowfall's end or after daybreak. Property owners need to place snow on private property or in designated snow storage areas within five feet of the asphalt curb, edge, or gutter. Keep fire hydrants and transformers clear of snow to ensure emergency and utility access. Do not push snow or ice onto the sidewalks, roadways, fire hydrants, or public transit loading zones. Failure to comply with snow removal rules may result in fines or penalties. And certainly, it would be a warning first, but this is a community responsibility. And just keep in mind, you're kind of keeping your neighbors safe from slip, fall, broken wrists, accidents, things like that. It's very important. Then, on more of a personal note, I really would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday season that's coming forward. Delighted to see the snow coming down, and it looks like it's going to be a few good snowy days going forward. I was able, last week, to go up to the senior center Thanksgiving dinner. And I'd like to congratulate them on doing such a great job and having such great food. But it is a reminder, as myself, I've now turned 65, and I would jokingly say how old so many of my old friends have been getting. You just are surprised by it, but we are an aging community. And I think that our work as a council is very much always oriented towards the future and the next generations and how they experience Aspen, keeping the best of what we've experienced and adding more for a modern world. So thank you very much. We will move on to the city managers, well, the agenda amendments and city managers' comments. Are there any?
No agenda amendments that I'm aware of. And just a quick plug that the city has released an RFP to seek out a new operator for an affordable, family-friendly restaurant at the space next door down by Rio Grande Park. So that'll be open for this month. And for those parties interested in providing that type of service to the community, we'd be interested in hearing from you.
How will people find that RFP?
So there is a new link on our main webpage to identify all the information and kind of the specs and requirements for that type of proposal.
Okay. Thank you very much. John?
I wanted to make one more comment.
Please.
I did want to, Mike, did want to give a shout out to Pete and staff for what I thought was a really great holiday gathering. It's always nice to mingle with staff when we're not at work. And nice to hear what staff has to say to us. And it was just, I thought it was great. Thanks.
I appreciate that, and I also want to make sure that it was not me that organized all of that, and I want to give credit where credit's due. The events team did an amazing lift on it.
All right. Thanks, events.
Very good. Thank you. So, we have board reports. Nothing at that end. I know that our meetings are so close together this time of year. Sam?
Nordic Council update, they're going to work on updating the website. I don't think it's been updated in a number of years. But one of the things on the website to note for council and community members is the Nordic Pulse app to keep up on trail updates, what's open, what's closed. And then lastly, Nordic Council signed an agreement with the Meadowood HOA for use of their land. It's not an easement, since it's temporary, but yeah, so we got at least three more years.
That's always a good one to have in the bank, so thank you for being there and taking care of that. That's it, everybody. The only one meeting I had since our last meeting was with the ACRA, the Aspen Chamber Resort Association. They will not be meeting in December. They're very excited for the winter skull that will be kicking off coming up next weekend, isn't it? Is, yes, we'll be having a soup skull again, so I hope everyone can turn out for that. And the actual kickoff is on the 11th at Red Onion on 422 East Cooper. Tickets are available through ACRA, but it's going to be really nice to see the inside of that building that's been under renovation for quite a while. They are very appreciative of the work that they've done with the city for finding a permanent location so they can move out of the Armory and the Armory project can move forward. So they're doing that and revamping a lot of their strategic plan. They're putting a lot of work into that and how they continue to improve their destination management capacities. So that's all we have for that, and we will move on to the consent calendar. I will read through those, and then we will see if anything needs to be pulled from the consent, or if we'd like to make any comments on the consent as a whole. The first is Resolution Number 151, Series of 2025, the Wheeler Opera House Performance Agreement. There is Resolution Number 155, Series of 2025, Contract Renewal for ESRA, Small Government Enterprise Agreement, Annual Subscription, and Small Government Local Utility ESRA Advantage Program. Resolution Number 156, Series of 2025, the Revised Oracle Contract. Resolution Number, there's three of them, 158, 159, and 156, Series of 2025, West End Congestion, Alta and Jacobs Contract Approvals. And then the last item on our consent is Resolution Number 161, Number 162, Series of 2025, the Old Powerhouse Preservation Contract for Construction Services and Contingency. So we are moving a number of items forward. You want to like to make comment first?
Yeah, on 158, 159, 164.
Okay.
But if there's staff to talk to, I do have just questions as far as clarity and transparency. Sent email about this.
Let me ask, are there any other items on this consent calendar that people would want to pull or discuss more thoroughly? Okay.
Are these ones, I should say?
Yeah, sounds good.
So I'm gonna, I have like a list of questions here, but I'm gonna do my best because trying to do them in order is tough. But for starters, for clarity purposes, and I sent an email about this and I got a great response from Tyler, but this is for me and the public and everyone else to ask, is any of this money going towards congestion pricing studying?
It is not.
It is not?
Not in these specific contracts.
I figured that, I mentioned this to Tyler, that in the beginning, that these contracts in the intended outcome line says for West End congestion, and it uses that word quite often. So I just wanted to point out that there is a confusing nature to it, especially for the goals of what we're trying to accomplish here. Like I said, just going to go in random order here. This money is just to study these certain items, but not to implement any of them. That would take extra funding, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I guess this one's more or less goes towards council of, there is a matrix at the bottom of this, and I was wondering if there were some items that we should reduce from this matrix based off cost and feasibility. I don't want to come off any level of extreme. I'm just sort of talking to council here as far as, I know it says in the memo that staff recommends approval, but at the same time, staff also says some of these are going to either be costly or complex or not necessarily work out. So in the most respectful way, I sort of just wanted to look at council and say, is everything on here what you guys want to pay for? Especially with money that is coming from a supplemental account. From there, I'll lead into looking towards Pete and whoever wants to answer as far as, can this money come from ETA reevaluation funding that we had dedicated like $10 million towards, or does it have to be supplemental funding? Because that obviously comes off as this is an extra expense that was not previously budgeted. I'll pause there if you want to answer that one.
Well, I'd like to respond. You are kind of throwing a number of them at us at once. And when I spoke with you on the phone, I mentioned that perhaps reevaluation dollars could be used.
Yeah.
And I have checked with Pete on that. And, you know, frankly, I don't like the name of this item, West End Congestion. I think this is the impacts of a failed entrance that this community has failed to deal with for decades. And that the last several years were spent with significant dollars studying a three-lane bridge. This is the first time we're really paying any real attention to this neighborhood and a neighborhood that is dealing with all the impacts of a failed entrance, where we know that 34% of the traffic leaving Aspen, oh, the traffic coming into Aspen throughout the whole day leaves at the end of the day through the West End Power Plant Road because past councils blocked off Bleecker Street and other streets. And so, again, for me, everything that is in the contracts with Alta and Jacobs, I would like to continue to pursue and get the information on. As you point out, they are designing and engineering and testing of those ideas to see if they will be valuable. And some of the lower-rated ones are not really ones I'm thrilled about, but I kind of think that they could be very quickly dismissed rather than continuing to recirculate from neighbors and from others and board members, kind of like a cow chewing its cud. What if we could do this? What if we could do that? Would be nice to answer the public and say, we looked at that and it really won't work. And so when I look at the total amount of the contracts at $400,000, a little less than that, to start to answer some of these questions, there's nothing I take off that list. I want to know definitively, don't waste your time with this, or yes, you can get some results out of that. So just to answer the questions I've been able to copy down.
No, I understand. And again, like, I just want for the public, for this to be transparent, I just, and for us to be responsible in doing our due diligence and be financially responsible as well, because there is a perception in this community that we've spent endless amount of money on studies and they haven't produced what we were looking to get. And then when it comes to the West End, you're right, it's because of a failed entrance. And at that time, the only way to fix that is to help with 21st Century Coalition and their prerogative of reducing congestion and improving traffic flow. And these items are not going to reduce congestion in the West End, more likely than not, and thus, and also $400,000, although a modest sum to the city is money only well-spent if it's going to go towards implementing some level of solution that people will feel an impact from, especially when it's already unbudgeted. So I'm not saying that I don't support some of these, especially to, if they have never been studied before, that I can look at you and ask that one, as far as have any of these ever been studied before, or is this all new?
These are all new items.
Okay. I mean, that definitely helps in a way. It's just, again, for the public and everyone else listening, involved in this, that, you know, this council, approving this contract, is doing this because we believe that this is going to end up working towards solutions that will better the lives of the citizens who live and visit here. And that, that's really all I want to get at, and that this is money well-spent. And I just felt like the way this memo was written, and it feels almost like a lukewarm endorsement, like, I'm just saying, perception-wise, I don't want to feel like we're just throwing things out there and what sticks. I want to be a lot more deliberate. And I sort of just wanted staff assurance that we are being deliberate with this item towards things that are actually going to make improvements.
Yeah, I think to address some of your concerns, perhaps the language in the memo, it's more focused on alleviating some of the concerns caused by the congestion. So it's more focused on alleviating some of the concerns caused by the congestion. So concerns about walkability of the neighborhood, safety with vehicles, but you're right, it's not going to solve the volume of vehicles through that neighborhood.
Yeah, and then part of this conversation right here is just being transparent as far as tempering expectations. But also, another part that I really want to hammer home is that this is just studies right now. $400,000 worth of studies, and to actually take those studies and to put them into real action is going to cost more money that presumably is not allocated at this point. Yeah. And then like the last thing, and this might be rhetorical question at this point, since it might not be the time, is just, it's what the 21st Century Coalition is doing, is like, what are we doing to reduce congestion now as we wait on a reevaluation of the entrance? And you may, you don't need to answer that if you don't, aren't prepared to, but it's just one of those things where we talk about, you know, the bus lane from the roundabout on and that sort of thing, as far as, what can we do right now? Because I know there's a growing frustration, and I got some comments today from the 21st Century article about people being like, what are you doing now? This is unacceptable. So.
Yeah, Sam, I can, I can take that one. So staff, based on council direction, is working on a number of items. One of that is the reevaluation of the entrance to Aspen. Additionally, council, as part of the budget process, voted on changes to parking rates. We're working on updating our car share program, and we did the trial this fall for the raft affair free. So those are kind of some of the things that are in the works or have just recently happened, and will continue to expand upon those programs as we work through the reevaluation for entrance to Aspen. So we're not just waiting for that study to conclude. We're trying to expand upon our existing program base.
And then just lastly, as one pointed question that people ask all the time, is why can't we use the bus lanes from Cemetery Lane on? And even if the answer is no, I think it's very important to reiterate why, because people think it is so simple sometimes, and it creates obviously greater frustration.
Sure. So I'll preface this with the fact that I'm not an attorney.
Yeah.
But I guess there's a couple of reasons for that. So those bus lanes are part of State Highway 82 infrastructure, which is owned and operated by CDOT. So it's a state-controlled piece of infrastructure. Additionally, those bus lanes were created with a dedicated, I believe it was a sales tax, that was very specific to that use case, which is bus lanes and transit-oriented bus lanes. So there's legal language around how that infrastructure is used. And we, and I can discuss further, but I think that's a high-level answer of why it's not that simple. And I guess I'll also add is, this is something that we are exploring with the state and our consulting team, Jacobs, and our sheriffs and our police department and Rafton, to see if a trial of that is possible from a legal standpoint.
Okay. I mean, that last part you said, I think, is the biggest deal to everyone, that like, it's still on the table, and that there is due diligence being done towards that. Because as someone who had lived in the West End, or who just like commutes here, it'd be nice to know that there might be help on the way, and people are doing their at least best to try to get to that point.
For sure.
So thank you, and thank you, Haley. And once again, to the rest of council, I heard Rachel's answer. If anyone, no one needs to speak, but if anyone has any of these items in the matrix that they're interested in reducing, I'm interested in talking about it. But other than that, I feel like I've spoken my piece, and I really hope the community has listened as far as what we're trying to do and how we're doing in good faith.
Any other comments to pull from?
Go ahead.
I would just say I did kind of flag the bottom two as, if we would have this conversation tonight, ones that we could pull. But I also see your point of view. If we don't do the study, then we can't say we didn't walk down this path. I think those two are tools for reducing service vehicles in a neighborhood and getting them onto a state highway. And we, and that, and we have to look at that as a way to alleviate some of the traffic out there. But I think if we don't do the study, then we can't really say we didn't explore that option. So I'm happy to keep it on there.
Phil, your comments?
Firstly, Sam, thanks for bringing this up, and definitely agree with your sentiment, and your, certainly your desire to get things moving and done to help alleviate the congestion, which I agree with you, this will not do. That being said, I'm supportive of many of these things. I would like to reduce this list, but not specifically to not do them, but because some of them are so easily doable, we should just do them. It's like, you know, some of them warrant study, some, I'll take all the responsibility if something goes wrong. School, school zone signage, why can't we just order those signs and put those up tomorrow? It's insane that, to me, that we would pay somebody to do a study on putting up school zone signs. This is not a novel concept. This is something that happens everywhere.
I think there was a response on that.
Yeah, I'll just add, it's not just analysis and studies, but it would be the actual design of the signs, the location. So it'd be, it'd be a full site plan of what does that look like?
Okay. And this is not personal to you, Haley, but like, you've done this before in other places, or even in Aspen, you've installed school zone signs. Like, it really doesn't matter if it's five feet in the wrong direction. Like, it serves the purpose. It doesn't need to be designed by an outside engineer, in my opinion. I think we should just do it. Same thing with one-way alley signage. That's not rocket science to me. I think we should just do it. Whereas, you know, technology and methodology for noise code and noise violation enforcement, if we're interested in studying that, I understand why that needs a study. Like, that's, might be somewhat novel, that might be, you know, really need some specific experts on that sort of thing. So my input would be, let's limit this down to the things that actually warrant study, and let's just do the rest of the things.
Thank you.
I don't know if anyone else shares that sentiment, but.
Not being an engineer, I'm not sure I can explain everything, but I do know that just one-waying the alleys is not necessarily an easy thing. You have to think about how people access their driveways and their waste removal and the flow of it, and it needs to take a serious look. And I know it took that sort of look to begin to one-way the alleys in the downtown, and decide, is it best to have the alley behind Hopkins go that way or this way? And where, what does the loop of the traffic and things look like? It's just, I'm just saying, it's not as simple of throwing up signs and hoping it all worked. But that's just my opinion. I'm just.
Yeah, and my, my counterpoint would be, 50% of the people are going to say you got it right, and 50% of the people are going to say you got it wrong, no matter what the study says. So again, just do it. Half the people are going to be unhappy with the direction that it went, and the other half are not. I just don't see a different outcome. You know, we talk about our outcome-focused goals, right? It's like, I think the outcome's the same, whether we study it or don't study it. School zone, you got school signs up there? People are aware of it's a school zone? Or we don't have school zone signs up there? It's pretty binary to me, but.
Yep. Well, I want to make sure we're doing the police, the school signs in such a way that the police can be able to enforce them, and be able to ticket people who are ignoring that when they go through. And I think that might take a little more coordination than us just throwing them up. But yeah, at some point, we're going to come down to a vote on moving these forward or not. I, I'll be open if people want to make amendment motions to try to subtract some things from this. But I look at this as being a neighborhood that everyone has ignored for a while, and I do not see it as a throwaway neighborhood. There are hundreds of residents who live there year-round, and others who are moving in. I can't personally, with what I've absorbed over the past three years, I watched a year and a half or more totally wasted studying a three-lane bridge, and over a million dollars spent on that effort. And then an effort to say, well, what if we just chop down the trees in front of the reading room, the Christian Science Historic Building? What if we just open a new EIS to try to make the two right-hand corners at Hickory House Corner and Hickory House slightly less of a pinch point, and widen and move those sidewalks and cut down those trees? And then, you know, there were, the amount of money that was spent to try to simply avoid the morolte, or to avoid ever asking the question about the existing record of decision, was massive. And this is small money to take care of a real neighborhood that has real problems. We have employees, we have patrons, we have music students who are all dropped off by the old Poppy's Restaurant on 8th Street, and are walking back to go to their jobs, to go to their concert, to go to a performance, just inundated with angry honking cars and no safe passage. You know, the bus lanes cannot be just opened up. There was a City of Aspen Public Open Space Vote that allowed them to be built on open space, and they were built with the sole purpose of being mass transit. So beyond the money that was spent to build those, which was also transportation money, would have to be repaid if it became general traffic, there would be a new open space vote necessary as well to allow it to be general traffic. And at that point, you start losing a lot of bus ridership, because what is the advantage of riding a bus when you're behind everybody in their single-occupant vehicle car? Because we've just decided to start accommodating all of those wherever we can, as easily as we can. So those are not things that I'm willing to go forward with. This is, to me, a regurgitation of, let's not deal with the problem that we've created by not solving the entrance. And I just find that really unacceptable. I think the public finds it unacceptable. Our staff is working diligently to move forward the record of decision, and to be able to get the reevaluation and some real things moving forward for us. But I don't want to hear about wasted time and wasted money, when I saw so much time and money wasted on an idea that, when actually polled in the public, only 25% of our residents thought it had any merit at all. And it only had one lane coming into town for all the traffic, including the buses. And this past council spent that time on that. This is just moving forward, one simple element of trying to move forward. We did do a lot in the, this year, in this past six months. Was it 175,000 on the free bus experiment? It was 250,000? That was real money we spent not long ago at all. And we, what we got? A 4% bump in bus ridership. 4%, not 25, not 30, not any of the big numbers people were hoping for. And we're not going to get more people on the buses if we say the bus lane is for cars, all the time, 24/7. So I'm going to bring it back. If you'd like to make a final comment, Sam, that's fine. But then we're going to see if there's a motion to pass some of the consent calendar.
Absolutely. I just want to say, I respect everything you just said. Definitely have some regrets from how things were handled my first two years on council about moving along the entrance to Aspen issue. I remember, you know, when those studies came up, how difficult it was. And I do just want to say for the record, at the time, I very much felt like we were studying a lot more than the three-lane bridge. But like, at the same time, it was not done in the deliberate way where it was like shown that these things were not going the direction that you think they are. So I felt like there was a lot of, not from staff, but from a lot of spaces, like misinformation and diversion, and like all the things that were needed, and why I was very happy that it went to a vote this past March. On the other side, when I talk about improving congestion, I just want to, well, two things. One, I very much want to improve safety and everything in the West End neighborhood. My critique of this is nothing to do with not wanting to improve things in the West End. It actually has everything to do with me wanting to improve things in the West End in a way that's actually going to be shown, since these are studies that maybe will do something, but they're not really congestion studies. Secondly, when I talk about like the bus lane from the roundabout on, I do talk about it in a way where I don't know, not necessarily what the 21st Century Coalition came up with, but I'm not talking about it always being general traffic, but trying to have some level of a metering system where it's utilized just to reduce congestion, but keep people on the bus at the same time. I think there is a way to have it both ways, which is why I think that's one of those solutions. And I think when there is a new entrance.
That's why we're in a reevaluation.
No, exactly. And I feel like when there is, when there is two full lanes and there's not pinch points, I think there's probably a way to reduce congestion by utilizing both lanes in a highest utilization mode. Anyway, lastly, I wasn't sure what the answer was on using ETA fund money for this rather than supplemental, because at least for me personally, it would feel better if it was budgeted money rather than unbudgeted money for these studies.
Yeah. We had 8.5 million kind of set aside for the ETA process. We did spend a little bit of money for the Transportation Coalition, 18,000 was our contribution to give them some kickstart funds. But the rest of that has been going towards entrance to Aspen-type events. We've committed roughly 4.1 million of that so far, but some of that work has actually been paused or discontinued, things like the three-lane, or S-curves and stuff like that. So there's going to be some return to fund balance, I think, over time for some of those commitments as well. So I do think there's money that we can certainly use out of that existing budget. The whole aspect of the 8.5 million is though that it was a true placeholder, because there is additional work beyond kind of what we've already scoped out, and we just put a number together to give us a starting point.
So it sounds like we potentially can.
You certainly can.
Yeah. So I would turn to the mayor and others and say, is there some level of money we can use from ETA funds for this? It would make me feel better about it that wasn't supplemental budget.
Yeah.
Additional items, because once again, we don't know where this is going to go, and we do have money budget for that. And if we do need to come back for more, it's, we'll come back in the supplemental for that.
Well, for me, I could go either way. It's not a life or death question by any means. But the thing that I do, sorry, you're commenting for me. What I am concerned about is the very significant amount of pre-engineering we're going to need to do to be able to get into the state loops for transportation funding in the future, and the TPRs, Transportation Planning Regions. And that's why even when you were working with the old council with Sarah, they were, keep saying, we want to get to 30% design engineering so we can start to pursue the state funding. But my bigger comment was that we've been going through budget hearing, and all of our staff and every department has been going on with their work. If this work of identifying these contracts and how much it costs and what they would be, had been ready three weeks earlier, they would be part of our 2026 budget rather than a supplemental. So I just don't see that as a big issue, that it's a supplemental. It just, it's a timing issue in terms of how we started our budget processes and where this was in terms of being ready. And that's what quarterly or twice-a-year supplementals are all about. And so it's, it's not like it's, oh, we forgot about it. It's just that it wasn't cooked yet, you know? So does council have strong feelings about that? I mean, for me, coming out of the entrance to Aspen might leave a little more in the general fund for Armory, should we need it. On the other hand, we might end up doing a supplemental back to the transportation needs in the future, because we need to bring this project up to a certain level to pursue state and federal funding. John, what's your feeling?
My suggestion would just be to move it forward the most straightforward way possible.
Okay, that's kind of how it's written now, I think. Any other? Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay. All right. Well, let me ask, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benidetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richards.
Yes. Thank you very much. We have no notice of call-ups, and we do have the first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 17, series of 2025, establishment of six transferable development rights certificates for 500 West Francis lot split.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, Nicole.
Good day.
Get all connected here.
Hey.
this might be my first presentation to all of you, so happy to be here tonight. With me is Alan Richmond, who's the, representing the applicant.
And it's my first meeting with city council ever, so.
I think you all know Alan.
You brought him out of retirement. What's going on?
Only one foot in the retirement bag.
Oh, okay. Do you have your red lights on over there? Do you have your red lights on over there?
Probably not.
There we go. Oh, it should be green, should be green, not red.
All right. Is that better? How do I get this to full mode here? I don't know why it's doing this. Yep. Now, I get to the... Yes, one that presented view. This one? Yeah. All right. There you go. All right. Thank you again. So yeah, we're here tonight to consider the first reading of an ordinance to establish transferable development rights. I want to recognize our Historic Preservation Officer and Principal Planner, Jillian White, who's prepared all the materials in your packet and did the review of the request. We'll do a quick overview. So here is the property that we're considering, outlined in red. It's Lot 1 of a subdivision that was done back in 2007. The subject property is a 3,000-square-foot lot. And as I mentioned, there was a historic lot split in 2007, which created this lot, which is Lot 1, and then Lot 2 directly to the east. The property is located in the R6 medium-density residential zone in Aspen's West End. It does currently share an address with 500 West Francis, which is the historic home on the corner. Lot 1 has currently a maximum allowable floor area of 1,593 square feet, which includes a 500-square-foot floor area bonus, which was granted by the Historic Preservation Commission back in 2007, I believe, when the lot split was done. Here's some more information on the property. On the left, you see the 1904 Sanborn map. Again, the subject property is in red, so there was a home on the property back in 1904. And then you've got the existing aerial from today. The request is for six transferable development rights certificates. TDRs are allocated in 250-square-foot units, and so that's how you come up with the six. So the request, if approved, would sever 1,500 square feet of allowable floor area, which would leave about 93 square feet remaining. Here's another historic photo of the home, pretty similar to how it looks today. This is black and white, so it's hard to tell.
It's the Blue House, isn't it?
Yeah, I've got one in the next slide, which shows it in its current state. But that red arrow is showing you that there was a home back on this Lot 1 years ago. And so here's a view from the street. There's the historic home on the right-hand side there. And so what we're considering is, yeah, the property where that yellow shading is. Again, this is a street view. And I'll just say that historic lot splits, floor area bonuses, and the TDR program are all benefits that the city offers for designated and preserving historic resources. In this case, the home at 500 West Francis is the historic resource. To date, the property has benefited from the lot split and the floor area bonus that was awarded to Lot 1. And while approving the TDR changes what was anticipated for Lot 1, at the time, I think it was anticipated there'd be a home built, staff recognizes that the preservation benefit is intact, whether Lot 1 is developed or these rights are transferred to a different receiving parcel. And there we've got the language from the code as to why we have the TDR program, again, to incentivize preserving historic properties. And so this is just the first reading tonight. This was brought to the Historic Preservation Commission back in November 12th. It's one of the requirements in the code. It says to bring a recommendation from the commission. The commission has recommended approval of all six TDR certificates in increments of 250 square feet. And then we've got a recommended motion for you for tonight, which would establish the public hearing and a second reading for December 16th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for staff or the applicant tonight?
I do. I drove by the property today to take a look. There was a "for sale" sign in the yard. Is the property for sale?
The property has been for sale for some time, and Mr. Murdock has talked with various developers about partnering with them to develop the lot. It's his firm desire not to see the lot developed.
Right.
That's why he's applied here. He would like to see this lot stay open. But yes, the property has been for sale. This came up at HBC as well, and that's absolutely correct.
Thank you. I have one other question on this. Did the remaining fathering parcel house use a floor area bonus in its construction?
No. The way the lot split was defined, the Blue House, the floor area that was assigned to the Blue House is the existing floor area on the property. So it had no remaining development potential. All of the development potential was moved to Lot 1. That was the reason that HBC felt so comfortable awarding the 500-square-foot floor area bonus back in 2007. It's pretty clear in Sarah Adams' memo to council that that was the case. And the other thing that Sarah mentioned was that the owner, who Mr. Murdock was in a partnership at the time and then became the sole owner, but the partnership had invested in the Blue House and basically restored it. And so the council and the HBC felt good about that. So the only remaining development potential on these two lots is the 1593 that you see in front of you, and this would basically remove the development potential from the property.
And Alan, is there any intention to create a public park from that vacant lot, a pocket park, or is it just becoming a larger yard?
Well, that's an interesting question, and I'm glad it came up. Before we submitted this application, Mr. Murdock met with some representatives of the Parks Department, I think it was Austin and Matt, and they were not particularly enthusiastic about it becoming a park. He offered as an inducement or as a positive outcome of this application that he would give the property to the city once the TDRs were removed. They felt like it's hard for them to manage parks like that and that there's the potential for needing police involvement from time to time. But that offer remains. If that's something that the council is interested in, I talked to Mr. Murdock about it as recently as yesterday, and I said to him, I said, Jerry, if that's something the council wants, I think it absolutely needs to be on the table. So if that would be of interest to this council, we would be happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, I have no idea if there's any interest in, you know, whatever our Parks Department recommends to us is something I would be concerned with. I just am concerned with, you know, the landing of where the TDRs land in other people's neighborhoods so that there can be a private yard created. And that seems like a lot of burden to homes that are already building to maximum code size, and then their neighbors get extra 250 square feet, or they could buy two or three and throw them on one lot, you know? And we're kind of seeing this gentrification of all the older neighborhoods other than the West End, that the homes already seem pretty oversized for the lots. So I'm concerned about the landing areas. But this...
Rachel, can I?
Yeah, please. Comments or questions?
I just want to make sure for clarity. I don't believe that you can land more than one TDR on a given lot, so maybe we can get clarity on that.
Okay, that would be great if you, you probably know more than I.
It scales up across the code. For larger lots, you can do two. In the West End, it's one. I think R15 is two. I believe so. R30 is two. But there is at most two, and that would be for larger lots.
Got it.
Okay.
Maybe I'm just not aware, but I doubt many get used in R15 or R30. More often than not, I think they're getting used in R6 or somewhere else, if they can go anywhere else, I don't know, for larger, for larger multifamily residential units, et cetera.
If I may, I just want to sort of, some of this discussion was about the use of a park and gifting to the city. I just want to be clear that your review is based on the criteria in the Landes Code, and I think you all understand that. But I think just for the record's sake, I just want to clarify that your decision should not be based on an offer to gift the city land and/or potentially create a city park. And I just felt important to make that record.
And Ms. Johnson, the only reason I'm suggesting it is in the code, the seventh criteria, I believe it is, talks about the city council needing to find that there's a benefit to the community as a result of the TDRs. We think there's lots of benefit in terms of consistency with the character of the West End and creating an open yard, if you will. And I'll speak to that in the public hearing, but that would certainly be in response to that criteria.
Okay. Well, no decisions are made during first reading.
Understood.
But it is a chance, if others have any other questions, to ask at this time, or even if it's for more information, that will come at the second reading.
We've suggested that Austin or someone from his department attend second reading. I think Jillian suggested it to me, and then I ran into Austin and said, you might want to be there on the 16th to respond to any questions.
So Matt, Matt Coons came by my office today, and we spoke, and he will be here at second reading.
Great.
He advised that this might come up.
Okay. Christine?
Yeah, I have one question, and this might be for Ben. I saw there was discussion about awarding a TDR for the bonus square footage that was originally granted. How many other properties does that possibly affect? Are we setting some sort of precedent here?
No. You know, I think it's fairly common for that to be a benefit that HPC awards in preservation projects. And so, you know, I think when the historic lot split went through and there was an acknowledgement of the sort of renovation and the sort of preservation of the property on 500, you know, it was a benefit that HPC decided, based on what was happening on the property, that that was an appropriate benefit to grant to the project. That's a fairly typical benefit that's granted. Sometimes it's 250, sometimes it's 500. It's up to a maximum of 500 that they're able to grant. Pretty typical benefit that's granted to historic preservation projects. One of the other questions that came up about this application was, you know, is it typical to, you know, sever development right to creating essentially a vacant lot? You know, there's a little bit of floor area left, but for all practical purposes, this would be a sterilized lot for future development. There's also precedent for that across town, where we've given floor area, particularly in situations of a lot split, and, you know, later, there's a decision not to develop on that separate parcel. This is not the first time that this request has been made, and certainly would not be the first time it had been approved.
Okay. Thank you. Can you bring up some of those other examples for second reading, Ben?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Bill?
I think the only one that I can think of is, and I don't know if the code allows for this or not, but is it of interest to discuss an all-or-nothing sort of scenario, where all six are, have to be severed, or none of them can be severed? You know, if we're talking about a full sort of sterilization of the site, if that's the interest. And again, I don't know if this is allowable in the code or not, or if Alan and Jerry have really made that sort of decision yet or not, but is that something we want to discuss and analyze? I don't know. Yeah, there was a discussion at the Historic Preservation Commission about the two bonus TDR, or the floor area bonuses, and whether that should be part of the kind of transfer. And so they had a good discussion. In the end, they decided to support all six. But we did recognize that the bonus of the two 500 square feet are, it's a little different. But it's my understanding it's not unprecedented, like Ben has said. It's, I think they've been awarded and then transferred. Yeah, understood. That's not what I was getting at, though. I think Ben gets it, maybe.
Yeah, well, maybe. You know, I think that just for council, council benefit, this approval would grant the ability to sever TDRs. That does not mean that the applicant would necessarily need to do so. They could take this approval and still go and do the development right if they were not to pursue the issuance of the actual TDR certificates. Along with that comes a deed restriction that kind of specifies a reduction in floor area per certificate, sort of as they're issued. Across the TDR program, when people are granted the ability to issue them, some owners decide to do all at the beginning, and some of them do them incrementally over time. And so, you know, it would be, under current code and sort of normal practice, it would be up to this owner to decide over time if they wanted to do two at a time every five years, or do three and leave 1,500, or excuse me, 750 square feet on for, you know, some other purpose. But I will say, under its current lot configuration, it would have to be a standalone resident. You could not have an accessory building on this lot for the property, or for 500.
The other lot.
It would have to be a primary residence. So to some degree, I think a little bit of the concern that you're getting at might be alleviated, and it could not be an accessory building to 500 that could be built there if there were, you know, only three TDRs and there were 750 square feet left over, or roughly eight, you know, eight-something. It would have to be a primary structure if, and so I don't know if...
How big does a primary structure have to be, though? I mean, the old Victorians were...
It just has to have a kitchen and a bedroom, right?
Yeah, it'd have to be, it'd have to be a dwelling in it. And so, anyway, I don't know if that sort of addresses your concern.
No, I don't have a concern. I just wanted to, I wanted to, one, check in to see if everyone's expectation is that by granting this, you're guaranteed to have a sterilized site. That's not how it works. So if your support of this is predicated on that, we should have a conversation. And two, I don't know if that's something of interest, you know? Maybe there's sort of an arrangement that after these things are severed, then the lot gets sold to a certain price for the 500 owner. I don't know. That's really none of my business, but I thought it'd be worth discussing, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, because I know that they can be severed over time individually, and it's at discretion, so.
Yeah.
And just to speak to that from Mr. Murdock's perspective, he used this phrase with me yesterday. For him, granting the six TDRs, he used the word, "It tips the scales in favor of this approach," for him. You know, he's been offered some fairly lucrative development opportunities. We all know what vacant real estate and development in the West End is worth in this community. This makes it worth it for him. It's what he wants to do. It's the outcome that he wants to see. So, you know, that's as well as I can speak to it. He will be here at the public hearing, and he would be happy to explain his intentions to you and speak to that.
I do want to add to what Ben provided to you. I think, and I don't know if, maybe I misunderstood the question. If, for instance, during second reading and after the public hearing, council were to say, well, we maybe would think about granting three, but not all six. Application is for six. I think at that point, you would have to continue it and let the applicant decide if they wanted to amend the application, the request, to be three. But as it sits right now before you, I think you can either approve the six, or during your discussion, give some direction to the applicant as to what you would be willing to approve, and then they're going to have to make some decisions based upon that. But I don't think you can unilaterally amend that application to be less than six without their insight. And so my recommendation, I think at that point to you, would be to continue it and let the applicant discuss amongst themselves, and then come back if they want to potentially amend that request, if that makes sense.
Also not what I was getting at.
But also interesting.
But interesting. And thank you. More was, I wanted to make sure that the rest of council understands that by approving this doesn't mean that this lot is sterile.
Right.
By approving this doesn't mean that a 750-square-foot FAR structure doesn't get built in a few years after they've severed three of the six. That's up to them. They have that discretion. So I wanted to make sure everyone understands that and is okay with that. If the goal is to have a sterilized vacant lot in perpetuity, then maybe we should have a different discussion. Maybe there's something else we should offer the applicant if they're interested in something like that. I think it would have to be a negotiation and a conversation, but...
Thank you. No, very good points. And actually, you brought something up for me, to request for a future meeting or information memo, or whatever form it should take. But kind of an update on the city TDR program overall. I don't know, I know I haven't in this past eight months, and I'm just not as familiar. You know, the county would have an end-of-the-year TDR report, how many are out, how many, you know, what the market is doing, how much they're selling for. memo or whatever form it should take, but kind of an update on the city TDR program overall. I don't know, I know I haven't in this past eight months, and I'm just not as familiar. You know, the county would have a end of the year TDR report, how many are out, how many, you know, what, what the market is doing, how much they're selling for, things like that. And I think it'd be really valuable to understand as a council, how many TDRs are out there that have not landed anywhere yet? How much square footage? How many TDRs? What is the current TDR market to the extent you're able to find that out going for, price for a TDR? And how have the past TDRs been used? And, you know, that was a program originally developed to save the back country and some of those things, and I want to kind of get a better sense of how it's really playing out within city limits.
Rural and remote, and it largely was successful.
Pardon?
Rural and remote is why TDRs were implemented and it was largely successful.
Agreed, agreed. So that is, that is that. We'll be moving along with a request to read. And is there a motion to read ordinance number 17?
I'll move to approve ordinance 17 on first reading and to set a public hearing for six.
Just to read it.
Okay.
Just to read it.
Motion to read, ordinance 17.
And seconded it was Sam. Thank you.
Counselor Benadetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richard?
Yes.
Ordinance number 17, series of 2025, an ordinance of the City of Aspen City Council approving the establishment of transferable development rights certificates for the property located at 500 West Francis Street, legally described as Lot 1 of the 500 West Francis Street Historic Landmark Subdivision, City and Townside of Aspen, County of Pickens, State of Colorado.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Would you call the rule? No call.
Counselor Benadetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richard?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. We'll see you in two weeks.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Look forward to the discussion.
Thanks, Ellen.
The next item, it's ordinance number 15, series of 2025, 611 East Durant Avenue, Little Nell Base Area, Minor Plan Development Amendment, 8040 Green Line Review and Conditional Use Review. I'm going to ask that we take just a short five-minute break while you set up and get everything together, okay? Thank you. Very good.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Richards, Jeffrey Barnhill, City of Aspen City Planner. Today we are going to talk about the Little Nell Base Area redevelopment, specifically the Nell Bell Lift. The applicant team will do their presentation first, followed by any questions, and that'll be followed by the staff presentation. Thank you.
All right. And thank you for having us tonight. My name is Mac Keeling. I'm the Vice President of Mountain Planning for the Aspen Skiing Company, Travis Benson, Mountain Manager, Jeff Buckheister, CEO, with us today at the chairs. And then we have Joe Hamery, who is our Director of Lift Maintenance. He keeps everything moving in the crowd, as well as Eric Newmeyer, Development Manager, who has, who's helped with this application in a, in a big way. So really appreciate the opportunity tonight to talk about something we are very excited about, which is a little thing we're calling the Nell Bell Lift. So today we'll go through just our consistency with city code, what we've done as far as other processes and public outreach, the why of why we are proposing this lift, talk about the description of the lift, how it will impact the surrounding trail network, and then how we're going to continue to supr, to provide world-class access for events and support for local charities and whatnot at the base. So, all right. So, real short and sweet. It's detailed, more in your package, but the staff recommends that the ordinance is approved on second reading and that we are consistent with city codes with, in the Little Nell SPA and for all the applicable codes general. We have started this process a while ago with the Forest Service and with the county, and we received, and as well as our neighbor at the residences at the Nell and of course the Little Nell Hotel. So we received a, a letter from the Board at the residences on November 11th in support of this project, and they are really the, the only neighbor outside of us that would be affected by what we're doing here. We received Pickens County's approval on September 25th for all the parts of the project on their property, as well as receiving acceptance from the Forest Service on February 28th. And the only thing outside of the city process that remains after this is the environmental review with, with the Forest Service, which because of the fact that we're going from private parcels to forest parcels to private parcels to forest parcels, it's called a connected action within the Forest Service. Therefore, they review the entire, the entirety of the lift through their environmental lens. So we're covering those bases and we're, we're being told that we should expect approval from the Forest Service from the NEPA aspect in January of '26. So what is the need here? We see some very obvious needs, one being the 21 minutes that it currently takes to get, and that's just ride time, that's not queuing time, that's not traversing from the top of the Little Nell Lift over to the bell chair. That's just straight ride time, 21 minutes to go up the Little Nell Chair and then up the bell chair. In addition to that, both the Little Nell Chair and the bell chair are chairs that are not operated on an everyday basis, whereas what we're talking about with the Nell Bell is something that we hope to be operating on a daily basis to provide that extra capacity and, and all the improvements on improved circulation. So with the Silver Queen, if, you know, A, for, you know, for specific busy days, like this will absolutely alleviate the, the large lines that you've seen traditionally, the wrap around the block, go past the portica share of the residences, up the hill, et cetera. This will essentially win operating. We believe that that line that happened, you know, last Thanksgiving, or two Thanksgivings ago now, that I personally stood in for an hour and 10 minutes would have, you know, been something under 10 minutes is, if you do the math. And that was a 30-inch day on opening day where this was the only mountain open. So just to give you some context, we feel like this will greatly improve that experience when the gondola goes down. As far as any mechanical issues, Aspen Mountain essentially, you know, it doesn't close, but it is extremely hampered as far as being able to get people up the mountain. This lift will provide excellent redundancy as far as getting people out of the base and onto the mountain. And then just as far as general skier circulation, once you get to the top of Bell Mountain, you can get to any of the mid-mountain lifts just straight away. So you can get over to Heroes, you can go over to Ajax Express, you can get to, over to FIS. If you really know how to do the goat paths, you can get all the way to Ruthies. So this is just something we really feel is, is kind of a, it's, it's a cheat code. It gets, gets a gateway to get to the mountain faster than you could to any of those lifts if you rode the Silver Queen. So there's your pro tip for your powder day when you're trying to beat everybody else's stash. And then just replacing aging infrastructure, Bell Mountain Chair, 1957. We literally out two days last year?
Two days, two hours a day.
Two days, two hours a day, and that is for a multitude of reasons, but it is, one of those reasons is that for those events when the Silver Queen, like if the Silver Queen were to go down this winter, we need to make sure it's in tip-top shape and we can't run too many hours on the piece of equipment because of the mechanicals. So, and then the Little Nell Lift, 1986, although that's not extremely old as far as lifts are concerned, that's also aged and we feel like it's, it's time for a new chapter and that we've, out of the base, that this lift has just helped service so many more people in so many different ways. So here's a, a map of the, of the mountain, and the Nell Bell Lift is what go, it'll go from the Silver Queen Plaza straight up to the top of Bell Mountain. It is the, it's a little difficult to see on the screen up there, but it's the lighter purple color, right? Right smack dab in the middle. In addition to that, this project also includes on city land, the removal of the Little Nell Chair. It also includes the removal of the bell chair. And just as, just as you're looking at this, you know, it doesn't go quite parallel with the Silver Queen, but it's pretty darn close. So there's no crossing of the Silver Queen line at any point, anything like that. Fits roughly an eight-minute, 15-second ride. We'll have, we're proposing an 1,800-person capacity, which is a pretty standard capacity for our quads. And it's, and we're proposing it to be a quad. This is a, a plan view of how this could look in Gondola Plaza, so it's the darker rectangle in the middle, and we would lift maze on looker's right, skier's left, and on this aerial, you see the existing bull wheel for the existing Little Nell Chair, for context. And then this is a profile, a draft profile, mind you, because we're, we're finalizing engineering with the lift manufacturer right now. But the intention is to have six towers on city land, as well as the base terminal, and those towers will range from 25 to 50 feet in height. And we've, I've kind of already touched this, but this just shows a little clearer description of some lines on how you get to the lifts, how you ski down from this location on intermediate terrain. You know, there are no green runs on Aspen Mountain. We have, we serve intermediate expert-only terrain, and so this is a lift where you can access all the exact same intermediate runs from kind of that Deer Park saddle, so. And then I'll have Travis talk about the events.
Obviously, Little Nell is the canvas to our community. We do host a bunch of events up there between Winter School, Ajax Cup, World Pro Ski Tour, Gay Ski Week, and night skiing. Really and truly, night skiing is the only one that gets impacted because you're stretching it a lot further up the hill. So, but that's also a fairly new event of, we're in our third year now, was a core party for a long time. So it's maybe reimagining that one. The rest of them, we're committed to. As far as Torchlight Parade, Ajax Cup, all the ones we just listed, with the exception of maybe Gay Ski Week for a couple of participants, we feel that the level of skier is there to get down copper. If it's night, if, if it's a night event for torchlight, we would light the pathway to get those skiers down there for that torchlight. And then with Gay Ski Week, you get a few participants that maybe don't have the ability right now to get from the top of the Nell Lift down to there. We're already running them in toboggans. And for any of those oddball events that we'd have to have to be able to get skiers up to those levels, we'd be committed to whether we have to toboggan them down if they don't have the skier ability or, you know, run light snowmobile traffic. We also have Powder Tour Cats to be able to facilitate that, that feasibility to get them there. There's no question, like I said, it is the canvas of Aspen Mountain. It's beautiful to paint fireworks on it and to host our community there, so it, we, we take it very seriously and continue to honor that tradition. Yeah.
Great. I, I personally was wondering how you were going to deal with the events without the Little Nell Lift, so I really appreciate you including that aspect.
All right. And that's our presentation, short and sweet, so.
Thank you.
I would just add that, you know, the ski company is extremely excited about leveling up our infrastructure on Aspen Mountain. It's a skier's mountain. It is, it's, it's a pride and joy for a lot of people, and I think that this will ensure that regardless of weather and, you know, the, the operability of the Silver Queen gondola, that we have a way to continue to get people up there, and, and we're excited about that. And I'll just add, I'm in my third year as the CEO here, and I think the other component for me that's really important is it's hard to be a ski resort operator and to see lifts that you don't operate on your mountain. And so for us, I think a lot of people love the bell chair, but we, I don't think we can continue to run that any longer, and it's time to, to upgrade and, and make sure that people can access the mountain and, and really probably find a new way to, to circulate and ski in, in a very enjoyable way. So we're excited about it.
Okay. Very good. And then let's go here and have the staff presentation, and then we'll see if there's questions for anybody.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, great. Again, for the record, I am Jeffrey Barnhill, City Planner for the City of Aspen, and this is for ordinance number 15, series of 2025. Let's get into it. As Mac mentioned earlier, this project encompasses four parcels within City of Aspen city limits, just shown here. Again, kind of a re, re-show from some images from their presentation. Here's what the proposed Nell Bell Lift Terminal is proposed to look like, and this shows the six towers within City of Aspen city limits that are proposed. And then again, a photo of the station layout. So planned development reviews details upfront and provides more flexibility in site planning than what underlying zoning allows. PDs are generally reviewed in two phases, project review and detailed review. This is just a minor amendment to the original project review approval. Project review focuses on allowed dimensions and site planning, whereas detailed review is more materiality and things of that nature. Jumping into the Minor Plan Development Project Review Amendment standards, staff finds that the proposed development dimensions represent a character suitable for and indicative of the primary uses of the project, and the project enhances the distinct identity of the existing cultural resource, which is the ski area. This project has been contemplated in this location as a ski base area in the past, and ski lifts and towers are commonly associated with ski areas around the world. The criteria are more thoroughly explored in Exhibit A of the staff memo, but I just wanted to focus on these two that are shown on this slide, and staff found that these criteria were met. 8040 Green Line Review focuses on limiting the adverse effects to land above the 8,040 feet above mean sea level line in the city. This focus on- This focus on suitable land for development, measuring adverse effects on pollution, soil erosion, drainage, air quality, and limiting disturbances to the terrain. This property, like most mountainside properties in our area, is located within a mudflow zone and below avalanche or snowslide areas. So the 80-40 Green Line Review takes all that into account in the criteria. And staff finds that the applicant minimizes and reduces the impacts to the development to the extent practicable. And staff found that all criteria were either met or not applicable for the 80-40 Green Line Review as well. The applicant team plans to revegetate the areas where the Little Nell Chair is removed from, and the tower locations will be buried and revegetated. Additionally, the work consists of building a new lift station, lift shack, and new towers, of which, again, only six will be in the city of Aspen, limiting the potential development in city limits. And further analysis of this criteria can be found in Exhibit B of the staff memo. Lastly, conditional use. Conditional uses are those land uses which are generally compatible with the other permitted uses in a zone district, but which require individual review of their location, design, configuration, intensity, and density in order to ensure the appropriateness of the land use in a zone district. Staff found that the conditional use is compatible compatible with the mix of development in the immediate vicinity. The lift terminal and lifty shack will both be smaller than the existing gondola structure, but will be larger than the existing Little Nell Lift Terminal. The original redevelopment of the Little Nell Base Area was required to go through the same reviews as are applicable to this new development. Staff finds the conditional use is consistent with what currently exists on the parcel and enhances the mountain access for skiers. The conditional use is consistent and compatible with the character of the immediate vicinity of the parcel proposed for development. And with that, staff recommends that council approve the ordinance on second reading and adopt Ordinance 15, series of 2025. Here's a proposed motion. Happy to take any questions or concerns. Thank you so much.
Let's leave that proposed motion up there, and let me see if council members have. Do we want to do public comment first or our comments first? We can do it either way. I'm just asking you, not me.
I don't mind, whatever you want.
Why don't we open the public comment and see if there's other public comments, and then that can inform our comments?
Okay.
I'm going to open the public comment meeting on ordinance number 15, series of 2025, the Little Nell Base Area Minor Plan Development Amendment. Is there anyone here in the room to speak to this item? Tony? Come on up. I think he's going to give you that nice end seat there.
Thank you.
What was that?
Oh, thank you so much. Hi there. Hi. For the record, my name is Tony Kronberg, and I've skied in on Skico Mountains for 50 years now. And that this project, how can you say no to a new gondola, especially when?
Not a gondola, it's a chairlift.
It's a chairlift? It's a quad. It's a quad, okay. Well, how can you say no? Everything in my brain right now is gondola. I apologize. Good catch, Rachel. Thanks.
We agree to that as well.
Well, gondola is nice because it's warm, it's heated, it's, you know, has a lot of benefits. So what the two things that I like about it is that you won't have those lift lines down at the bottom, because that is just not much fun. And it doesn't really give a good image of Aspen, that you have to wait, not only wait to get into Aspen on Highway 82, but now you have to wait in line to get up on the mountain. And then the two things that struck me was the fact that how it reduces congestion. And I do a lot of security work over at the Skico, a lot of the different events, and it can become a real cluster over there with the Little Nell. We work events and do traffic management, and we do a lot of work on the gondola, getting people up and down. But did you say that it was 1,800 passengers per hour?
Yes.
Now, is that one way up or is that both directions?
That's one way up.
So really, it's 3,600 people?
It's a chairlift.
If they're downloading.
If they download.
We're hoping they ski down.
Yeah, we hope they ski down, but the the lift is currently designed at a 25% download capacity.
Okay.
So one in every four chairs going down.
But I wholeheartedly give my support for the quad. I wish it was a gondola, but that's okay. We'll tackle that one next year.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on this item? And I am not seeing anyone online, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council table for comments or questions. John?
Yeah, this is Aspen Mountain's one of my favorite subjects to talk about. So this is great. First of all, after first reading, I was thinking about Aspen Mountain and the lifts and realized that the gondola was christened almost 40 years ago to the day, pretty close. And I actually rode on the gondola that very first day with Klaus Obermeyer, and he yodeled.
I was at Klaus's 106th birthday party today.
You upstaged me, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Dang it. Well, anyway, did he yodel?
He was having a blast, man. The Bavarian Band was 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 going. The Lederhosen were out in full effect, and the apple strudel was delicious.
He is he's the picture of positive lifestyle, right? Anyway, my question is, is it true that gondola was the first detachable high-speed lift that Palma built?
I don't know. It was not the first detachable.
Okay, just curious. Yeah, I'm also aware of how of how the Bell Chair is aging, and I remember in previous iterations of the upgrade to the Bell Chair, we're going to have the lower base terminal in Copper Gulch. So I think this is, again, I'm just so excited about this, especially because we're going to be losing the 1A lift soon for at least one ski season, and I think we most likely will be longer. Just guessing.
We hope not.
We hope not. I do, too. The last thing I wanted to ask is if because trees will be removed to facilitate putting in a new lift line, I hope there's an opportunity that we can collaborate with the county and city of Aspen to remove some more of the fuel loads up in that area of the mountain.
Those conversations are underway, as well as conversations with Aspen Fire Department. We've got three specific areas in not lift line, but adjacent, if you will, that where you've seen the Spruce Beetle Kill absolutely decimate the hill over the last five years. And it's our game plan to get in there next year and take care of all of that at the same time.
Yeah, I was looking at that today.
Our Timber Cruze.
Gardens Gulch is a hotbed of.
Are ready to go.
Fuels.
Yeah.
Very good.
I'm really so the goal is to possibly break ground and get this built this summer?
Yeah, so obviously, we want to clear the NEPA hurdle with the Forest Service in early January. And just given the nature of it being December 2nd today, our intent is is to build this as quickly as possible, and we need to obviously procure, and the long lead order of times could could become a challenge, but we're hopeful that they won't.
Right. And lastly, is there any concern from you guys that because of the current federal government, what's going to happen with the NEPA thing?
No, so we've seen they have they've already written their their draft approval letter for the project. We've seen it. They're going through one additional SHPO consultation, which they're anticipating to take a month, is what we were told yesterday. And so, you know, add the month and add a week, and we're at the beginning of January. So that's that's what we're currently expecting.
The reason I ask is because when we had the discussions earlier this summer about the Maroon Bells, the one NEPA person for the White River National Forest was working on the bathroom up at the bathrooms at Maroon Bells.
Yeah, no, there's no question the Forest Service has been under pressure with the shutdown and the the government changes and regulations. But we find that our partners on the White River are really excited to work with us. Our team is does a nice job of preparation of the documentation and and our hope and, you know, obviously, fingers crossed, is that we don't run into any headwind there.
Look on wood. All right. I think this is great news for the community. Thanks a lot for getting this spun through the process.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say thanks. I don't have any questions or comments. My only comment is thanks for continuing to invest in the community and the infrastructure and our wonderful ski resort.
Oh, heck, yeah.
Yeah, it's a pleasure.
I do have just one or two small questions. Are the gondola and this new lift going to be similar in vulnerability to winds? Do they have different, you know, have to shut down at 45 miles, have to shut down at 35, or are they differential?
So the 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 trouble spot, if you will, is the bell ridge for the majority of the Queen and and what will be the Nell Bell Chair. So they share that, but the difference will be the height. So when we're going with the Nell Bell, we're going to have more towers up top to keep the height of the chair lower, whereas the gondola is another 40, 50 feet above where that where the where the chair will be. So we're hoping that that will decrease the wind speeds and so that we can be operating this when the Queen would normally be shut down. But there will, of course, be days that are just too windy for anything, but.
We don't need any of those.
Yeah.
We hope we hope that that was that was really kind of my biggest question. And then more of a comment, I'm glad you're not looking at night skiing on Aspen Mountain Little Nell. We've been pursuing, already have some level of the Dark Sky Initiative in town, and it just it seems that more and more as our snow gets a little more questionable, that I hate to see it skied off with night skiing for the people who want to be there in the morning. So I really weigh that very carefully before moving anything like that forward. And I just it's so much on the presence of town. I think further away would be a better location, should that be happening. Anyhow, that's that's it for me. We have had the public hearing. Council members, no other comments. Is there a motion to approve number 15, ordinance series of 2025, the 611 East Durant Avenue Little Nell Base Area Minor Plan Development Amendment, 80-40 Green Line Review and Conditional Use Review? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much, and I think John said it for all of us and Christine, so thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate your service.
Thanks so much.
We will now go to ordinance number 14, the city of Aspen unclaimed property item. Thank you, Matt. I'm sorry, I skipped that one when I was looking at the sheet.
Not a problem. Matt Grau, Budget Manager for the city of Aspen. And we are here tonight for second reading of ordinance 14, series 2025, for changes to the municipal code regarding unclaimed property.
This was a very straightforward item from before. We're just updating our code, and we are putting it in the community newsletter. I know I've heard it from Caroline already, that we will let people know how to find that lost property. It is a public hearing. Is anyone here from the public to address us on the city of Aspen unclaimed property item? There being none and no one online, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 16.
14.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance 14.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We now will move on to ordinance number 16, series of 2025, amending Chapter 23 of the municipal code to update sales tax rates for support of the Aspen School District, number one, as a result of the November 5th election. This is pretty straightforward as well. I will open the public hearing and see if anyone is here to speak to this matter. There is no one for public comment in the room and none online. I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
So moved.
To approve series, but ordinance 16?
Exactly.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Will you call the roll, please, Nicole?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. We will now move on to our action items, and the first is Resolution 135, series of 2025, the mill levy discussion. And the mill levy is you're going to explain it all to us, huh?
I will.
Thank you.
Matt Grau, Budget Manager. Mill levy is approved annually based on property valuations we receive from the county, multiplied by a rate set by the state legislature. So that's really the basic calculation for property taxes.
Okay.
So this year, actual value of all real property, both residential and commercial within city of Aspen limits, is $34.2 billion, and that is up 1.5% over last year. However, the assessed valuation is down 3.2% from last year. And again, that is based on a rate set by state legislature and can change annually. Under Tabor laws, city of Aspen is able to set her own local growth rate calculation for our general mill levy annually, based on the rate of inflation plus local new construction growth rate. For 2026, property tax collections based on 2025 valuations, the inflation rate is 2.27% plus local growth rate of 0.43%, totaling a 2.7% rate. The temporary mill levy credit is adjusted annually as a variance between the maximum allowable tax rate and the local growth calculated rate. For 2025, mill levy to be collected in 2026, our general purpose mill levy is to be set at 3.640 mils. The temporary credit will be 1.770 mils. And then separately, our stormwater mill levy, which is not subject to Tabor caps, is 0.650 mils. All total, city of Aspen combined mill levy is 4.290 mils. Once again, that mill levy rate is then multiplied times our assessed valuation to calculate property taxes. 2026 property tax is projected to be $12.3 million, which is in line with our 2026 budget that was adopted based on preliminary numbers we got from the county back in September. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt. How much were those?
Thank you. How much were the property taxes collected in 2025 for 2024 property taxes? It was about $200,000, roughly, less than this year's rate, so. It's a 12.1 million. Yeah, roughly. Thank you.
Yeah, let me ask you, Matt, I I'm not sure if I wrote the numbers down, but you said there's a 3.640 mil?
That is our general property tax mill levy for 2026.
And that is 3.640.
Correct.
Okay. And then there's a 1.77 mil?
That's a credit. That's the credit.
That's the credit, okay.
The maximum allowable general property tax rate.
Would have been 5 something.
Could be up to 5.410.
Okay, I just had missed that one in my calculation, so I see where you get your number of the 4.29. And just for the general public's awareness, the reason a mill levy credit is given is a choice by the city not to collect all that would be possible under Tabor law and there are existing voter-approved mill levies. However, to lower it down but keep a credit is securing our ability to raise it again in the future should we need to, because property values decline so much that you still want to make the same sort of revenue. And under Tabor, if you were to lower your mill levy without a credit, you cannot raise it again without a new vote of the public.
I believe that's correct.
It is correct.
So that is that is why we do a mill levy credit. Thank you for that. Is there a motion to or further questions from council members on this item? Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 135, series of 2025, accepting the 2025 Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 135, series of 2025, accepting the 2025 mill levy?
So moved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sam and seconded by Bill. We don't have to call, we do have to call roll, but we don't have to read.
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much. And we are now to our asked-alise item, which is the lumberyard priorities. And this is kind of memorializing what we have discussed a couple of times, so that Chris can finalize these documents with, how do we say it, with the Gorman private partners that we're working with. So if you want to go ahead and present, Chris, thanks for being here this late.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Chris Everson, City of Aspen Affordable Housing Development Project Manager. The purpose of Resolution 160 is to memorialize council's decisions related to priority tenant applications for the lumberyard. If approved, the elements in the resolution will be drafted into the deed restrictions and recorded this spring. Council discussed applicant priorities at work sessions on July 21st and November 10th, and directed staff to include priorities for qualified emergency workers as defined in the APCHA regulations, and for qualified applicants employed within the Aspen urban growth boundary. Council also asked staff to include a priority for employer partnership program participants, and staff will bring forward a plan to further develop the employer partnership program details through an employer outreach effort. The resolution includes a cap of 50 EPP units, as we discussed. Council further asked staff to include conditions for future rightsizing and displaced occupancy, displaced occupant provisions, and that's included in Resolution 160 as well. And staff also included in Resolution 160, and this wasn't previously discussed with council, a mobility-disabled priority for ADA Type A units only. This is consistent with the existing 2025 APCHA regulations, and it's also consistent with the fact that the project will provide fully accessible routes throughout the site and within the buildings. Including a priority for these mobility-disabled applicants for ADA Type A units is optional at council's discretion, although staff does recommend making this provision explicitly applicable to the lumberyard. Resolution 160 lays out these conditions and also includes information about the hierarchy of the priorities, placing emergency workers at the top of the priority list for all rental units, along with first priority for mobility-disabled applicants for ADA Type A units only. All other levels of priority will be settled at the time of lottery via existing protocols defined in the APCHA regulations. If you have any questions that I can clarify for you, or if you wish to have any discussion?
Council members, any further comments? No. I did have one kind of detail I wanted to ask about, as we discuss the employee priority program, which we'll continue to flesh out. This is really just about making sure it's in our contract with Gorman. But APCHA has a minimum of a six-month lease requirement, and I wanted to make sure that we are making sure that that policy of APCHA is also carried forward, even though, so that if an employer gets someone in and then decides they don't like them, well, then, you know, it's kind of like, sorry, they have a little minimum of a six-month lease. So that I just wanted to make sure that that carried forward. It's not put somebody different in every three weeks type of arrangement, even though they've secured the unit for their priority for their employees.
Sure.
Okay.
We're working with the APCHA staff and APCHA's council. We will incorporate into the deed restriction their typical requirements of that nature.
Yeah.
And so that should, as a matter of course, make it into the deed restrictions, but I'll make sure as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Again, if there's no questions, does anybody have a motion to approve Resolution Number 160?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yep.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Last item, we do have a developer update scheduled for the work session at January 26th.
Oh, that sounds great. I look forward to that. Any other business or anything for the good of the order to offer?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank God.
It's been a while since we've adjourned in here.
All in favor, who will call their own?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yep.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Grassroots TV. We appreciate your work.